Forgot to meet everybody. It's pretty quiet. Pretty quiet.
You do have draft minutes from your last meeting of February 27th. Do you want to take a moment to look at those? Minutes are approved. Do you want to vote comments?
This is open to everybody, is that right?
The items that are not on the agenda.
I want to introduce dear friends to the community. I mentioned that they would be making hopefully a formal presentation in the future. They were here to speak to us and I wanted these to find young people to introduce themselves. Tomas Delitz, Rebecca.
Nevales.
Tomas?
Anytime that I'm referred to as a young person in any meeting, I'm very happy to be there. I'm board of directors chairman for La Cultural Network, which is a statewide network that's been around for about 15 years. We're celebrating our quinceañeras. And in general, I just want to say that we're here fundamentally to see how we might be able to partner our services to help develop local arts and artists and provide technical support and meet our mission, which is to amplify the fact that art is taking place in every community in California, no matter the funding climate, no matter the social climate. It's fortifying the identity and spirits and the reflection of diversity. And commerce is actually what we discovered after many years of arts support for business in California and so we are honored to be here today to participate in your meeting and hopefully that will be the longest I've been speaking.
We actually do have an item for you on the agenda under new business, so maybe at that point you could give us a little bit of a definition. Okay, very good.
Rebecca Navas is also here.
Director of La Cultural Network and I do have to address that.
Okay, great. Are there any other poll comments?
I am one of this world school, Oxner College and has the film and television program. I don't think we, I made this announcement last time because I think it was so recent. I've been out of town tending to my father who's sick. But the board of trustees wanted 401 to keep the film and television program for one more year they gave us. And in that year, they want us to revamp the program. As all of you know, arts in higher education are taking a big hit and I ask that this committee continue to support the film and television program there at Oxner College. Even if it's, how would I say this? We need all the support because I have a feeling that if Governor Brown's tax initiative doesn't pass, I think that we're going to be back on the chopping block. So we need to continue to put pressure on administrators to keep the film and television program and not just with our will and our good wishes, but also with some kind of a monetary fund as well. It's very important, I just can't stress that enough. We have one year reprieve and a lot of things have to do, a lot of things have to fall in place to keep that program. I'm really proud of my students. They really rallied and they bucked the system in their protest and their voice really being different. Along with community leaders, elected officials in the city and in the county. We're very instrumental in saving that program. So I want to thank all of you on behalf of the television program at Oxner College. So that's what I'm going to say, thank you.
I'd like to say something. My name is Javier, I'm 25 years old. I'm in the community of Oxner. I do art shows and for the youth of Oxner and I usually do them over at Cafe Ane over here, just on the street. I feel it's my responsibility as a young man to represent the youth of artists. I'm also an artist and to show, you know, to open doors to the youth that there is other opportunities rather than, you know, being in the streets and doing this, you know, this self-destruction. We have great opportunities here in Oxner and a great amount of artists that need that opportunity and they deserve that light, that spotlight and I provide that for them. And I want to, I want to be part of this and make sure that, you know, you guys can help me and I can help the community.
I also like to say I'm Joe Cortez, I'm with Music Box and I'm also a former student of Undressed. And the Music Box came out of OCTV, so I want to talk about the OCTV, which is a great program for me to learn my education, which the Music Box is aimed to support local musicians, music venues around Ventura County, but mainly Oxner and record shops like Peacock's, getting them out there, then aware of what's going on musically in the community. And I want to thank OCTV and Undressed a lot for that. And where I'm at now is I'm working within the Cafe Ane. We're trying to get the artist names out there by way of music shows and it's a great venue for people to come in and see music they don't even know existed in Oxner. And there's a lot of great talent in Oxner that people just don't know because in the past five years, music's been going downhill compared to when I was in high school. There was a lot more bands, a lot more mixed genres. And within the cafe, we want to be doing the study of ethnomusicology and letting people know the other cultural music that's out there other than Oxner. And I feel that Cafe Ane is a great venue for that place and it's a great place to share art. And I also want to thank again OCTV for my education in the entertainment and film programming. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Any other poll comments? First item is a list of Oxner arts groups. Armando, you want to figure your marks?
Yeah, I, since I'm the manager, the last I was here at the waste paper, I think we sent all the list to everybody. So is it here?
Through your passion.
Oh, I see, okay, cool. Thank you, I'm glad that it was, and this is obviously just a sampling. Certainly a sampling in the beginning and we can add and the leaders we go. But this is something, and I'm sure that we can do that now. Debbie and I and some other people looked at it and put these names down and it looks smaller because I think.
It is smaller.
It is smaller, yes.
Does it not include all the?
It doesn't include everybody, yeah.
It doesn't include everybody? There's political groups in the area that are not mentioned.
No, it doesn't include everybody, but I think, or I am.
But Debbie and guys, it wasn't supposed to include everybody. It was supposed to include, it's a start. It's what Debbie and I and, you know, people were supposed to jump in. Somebody else was supposed to do this list.
Might make a suggestion. I know we have Debbie's email, so if anything's omitted, I apologize.
I also have another list that I sent, that somehow did not get on here.
So I'd like to ask everybody to do, if you have an addition to this list, please write it out for us and Dan will collect them at the end of the meeting and we'll start the database. Thank you.
Could I just say also, I see at least one individual artist and I love this lovely individual artist. Are we including individual artists? Because I see Jackie and Yagi.
Yeah, there is, it's repeated, my name is repeated, it's twice.
That's right, you're in a few places.
I think we'll take the list and categorize it, so yes, I would like to include all the artists.
I won't be able to do that today, but I can.
Okay, that's fine. Oh, and if you, again, if you don't have time today, that's fine. Just email, provides it to organizations. We'd like organizations, studios and individuals, break it out according to that.
Matt, if I could add, it really, Javier, the question that you asked, really, it isn't always directed to the city. It's us, it's what can we do?
That was a point of clarification, Armando, it wasn't anything, it's a point of clarification.
What I'm saying is, we should include everybody and Margaret might, Carmen might want something that maybe we might want something else. Should we include, for example, Margaret Travers? I think we should, you know, should we, who should we include? We know better than the city council who to include, so what I'm saying is, let's be as inclusive as possible.
I don't know that that's true, but you can say that. I think I know a lot of artists and I'm fine. So let's be inclusive.
Right, yeah, let's be inclusive.
That was just a point of clarification, that's all.
And just let us know if it's an individual artist, if someone has a studio or a gallery or if it's an organization, just let us know what type of category it is so we can, and again, we don't, it's just a database we'll put together without any kind of filter or agreement.
I'd like to thank Armando for getting us started on the list. That's a start and this way we can develop a database, so thank you for that.
Okay, moving on to the second item, cultural arts staff support. We are still working on this and investigating whether to bring on extra help as temporary city staff or through a contract, there are some insurance issues associated with that option. So I missed a couple of weeks due to illness and so I'm a little bit behind that, but I should have that resolved.
When you, well, that would be on the next meeting.
Yeah, so keep a love for your messages. For the number three city council agenda item, that appropriation for the $200,000 that the committee previously recommended be appropriated for the arts, the 2012 Arts Grants Program, that will go to the city council on March 27th. We can, tomorrow, quick. And then on the art, the culture, number four, the cultural arts grant RFP, again, I'm a little bit behind on that, but I will have a draft that ready by the end of this week. And I would propose to distribute that to committee members as well as the members of the two committees that provided information on the RFP and the vision. I do, I do have attached to your agenda, I think it's the fourth page, a list of RFP issues and it'd be helpful if you had some direction to include in the draft RFP for the benefit of people who worked at the last cultural arts committee meeting. The committee did recommend that $200,000 of cultural arts fund be appropriated for the 2012 grant program. We need to decide how that, how that $200,000 will be allocated to the various categories and then what awards will be given, whether or not there will be minimums or maximums and what the ranges will be and so on. So I have just put down here some suggestions and that's all they are at this point. But of the $200,000, what I'm proposing is that it can be broken out as $100,000 for legacy organizations, which we agreed would be defined as a nonprofit 501 organization having a history of at least 10 years in the Oxner community. Emerging organizations, which we don't have a real tight definition of. And I'm suggesting $20,000 for that category and individual grants, $80,000. And before we talk about that, maybe we should go to the next, the next topic, which is the potential awards. And again, this is just for suggestion, for discussion purposes, but for the legacy organizations, the range could be between $10,000 and $25,000. For emergency, emerging organizations, $2,000 to $5,000. And for individual grants, $1,000 to $5,000. And then other issues that I've identified are whether or not we're going to have a requirement for matching grants for any or all of those categories or perhaps only for the individual grants. And I think there was some discussion as to whether or not the operating funding should represent a maximum amount of an organization's yearly operating budget. So I think there just needs to be a resolution on that. And then it doesn't have to be established today, but we need to give some thought as to who the review committee will be for the proposals that are received by the city. So those are the issues that I've identified that would be, need to be, I think, resolved, at least the first four items within the RFP.
Let's hear from the committee members, starting with the legacy and emerging.
I have a question, since the legacy is getting $100,000, how many qualify for that as a legacy? Do we know?
No, we don't.
But how many, I don't have to get $100,000, that's not a lot. We don't know whether we have one or 20. If we have three, I'm saying, I think, I just think that needs to be considered.
Well, I will say this, we have previously awarded in the previous grant program four, four organizations received $25,000.
What's the issue, George? What's your issue?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, could you elaborate on the issue that you're raising?
Well, the issue I'm raising, if there's only four legacy nonprofits and they get $25,000, I would say $25,000 each, I mean, it's a big chunk versus an artist giving $1,500 or $5,000 or even emerging. I mean, to me, I think there's a lot more emerging nonprofits than there is legacy. But that's just my feeling, but I'm not sure. I just think, I think we need to put the numbers out there because you'll find so many legacy, so many in the middle and, you know, what if you have 25 artists?
For one thing, you know, if someone's been here a long time struggling, I think they deserve, that's my personal opinion, if they've been here a long time, 10 years or more struggling, then the $25,000 will do a lot for that group. And we may not have, maybe, let's say we only have three. Well, if we only give each one $25,000 and there's $25,000 left, should we move it to reallocate it? See, so that's an option too. And can we build in that flexibility?
I understand, it should be a balance, that's all.
We can put language in, again, there's nothing magic about these numbers, they can be changed anyway. Shape or form, we could actually say nothing, but I think providing some sort of guidelines is a good idea, at least in a general way. But we can certainly say that, you know, these are guidelines and can be adjusted depending on demand or the proposals submitted.
Because I think we definitely need to spend the entire $200,000. I think we need to make sure.
I concur with George completely, I've discussed this repeatedly, that this whole notion of legacy. And I may be shooting myself in the foot, but I want to be transparent. But it is a slippery slope. Exactly what you're saying, George. I was thinking in my mind, who is, who is legacy? How much money are they going to get, how many are there? Based on, you know, what you guys did before that, you know, these four, five agencies. Is there another legacy, you know, organization out there?
The range would allow you to, you know, allocate or balance. You may give more money to, based on the proposals, one group may give more money than another one. It doesn't mean that everyone in that category groups, it's going to be pretty small. It's just a matter of how much money you want to allocate to that. It's going to be the emerging organization, I think, that don't have a 501(c)(3) status and, you know, where they're based or, it could be one person or a couple of people. I think that's going to be the more interesting fallout that we see in this whole process.
I'd like to add something. Well, Margaret's handling it.
Well, I think that it would be very helpful to get the list and see exactly what it shakes out at. And then I wanted to ask if you all had decided whether or not you would be giving money this time to organizations that are already funded by the city otherwise? Has that been decided?
In the, in the draft RFP, there's a line there that says that any organization that receives, I can't remember what it's called, it's almost like line item, funding from the city is not an option.
I'm just curious where that, that fell out, like the library or, you know?
Right.
Which is of course a great cultural institution.
They would not be eligible.
I wanted to say something about that legacy item there. You know, sometimes, you know, it does require, you know, large amounts of money to, you know, to do something great and I respect sometimes the emerging artists, they may, they may need money as well. It's a tough balance for this committee to try to make that there might be an organization that is, you know, rather large that maybe $5,000 is really not going to help them the way that they need to be helped, so we've got to keep that in mind.
I'm sorry I wasn't here last, so if I'm rehashing old business that was solidified, I apologize. But with the $25,000 and the idea that there are organizations providing a lifeline of services and products and programs for the community and they're dependent on this money and yet so much of it is being distributed in this grant cycle, I'm curious. A lot of times, a lot of times grants are issued for the creation of a program or a product that has a, that can get created and move on. This is for operational money, so I'm wondering if there's been any discussion about how to help the organizations, the legacy organizations, translate that money into more money the next year, more money the next year, something sustainable? And if there's been kind of a dialogue, we talked a little bit, I mentioned the cultural data project and how the city of Ventura requires after two years, it requires arts organizations to sign up and participate in the cultural data project and be eligible for other funding and things. Just how to best leverage that money, maybe the arts organizations themselves can put that forth, how to best leverage that investment to be sustainable.
I think that's a good idea, I think, I'm not sure where to do that with this first cycle. I think, I'm very excited, I think we're going to get some great things happening with this stimulus fund here, but what it's actually going to look like, who's actually going to apply, what are the projects, are their proposals going to look like? You know, I think it's going to be a happy supply, it's going to be for all of us.
Carmen, the issue of sustainability for the legacy organizations is almost the main point. We sustain ourselves. We've been there and we've sustained ourselves one way or the other. So we've done that, pilotation, we've done that. Then we need money, absolutely we need money. With that money, most of it I think will be operational, but if we're smart, we're going to use that to develop other programs and go after other monies. So we have that mechanism already. I don't know that we need to put money, our money, into that kind of concept where we're going to maybe hire a consultant to tell us what we already know. It's going to be a rough role, but we've done it. And we need to put that money, the money that we get, the hard earned money that we get, is going to go back into kids, the community, rather than consultants.
When you say operational, and I heard it twice, what are we meaning by operational?
Operational, I'm sorry.
Well, operational, I definitely, I mean, costumes, building sets, paying royalties, paying the rent to put on the show, that's what operations.
All right, that, I'm, the reason I ask is because I'm hoping operational means we don't see anything, it's just lost in the, in the organization or the studio group, but that it is producing something so that we, we will in the city see something tangible from the money. So that's why I wanted to clarify it by operational, because operational in a lot of organizations, you never see it, it just keeps you moving along and that's it. So that's why I wanted to lay it out so that everybody knew. I think by definition, the art community is going to produce what we can see, hear, listen to. Right, that's what I wanted to hear.
For us, operational just means that we'll have extra money, in this particular case, to create more things that we have been excluded from being able to do. Like in the art center, we've been afforded the opportunity in the past to, you know, work on developing a, an art program that involves harps that commit a cost of $1,800 each. And I have eight harps, so you can multiply that out and see how much money we already spent. And then also to provide at least funding for the consultants to come and train some of our students. You know, I mean, we've been blessed over the years that without the money, we haven't been able to give money to people or for us to secure consultants that can better advance the kids because, you know, I tried to get a violin teacher to come and teach and they said, well, I charge $35 an hour. I said, well, thank you, it's nice knowing you and, you know, I had to go back to square one where, you know, we had to find volunteers that would have the knowledge. So, you know, I mean, for us, it would mean that we could augment what we already have in existence and produce a more quality work of, a body of work within the organizations that we are doing.
That's all we wanted to hear. I just wanted it out there so that it was out, transparent, so that people would know. Because as a budget person, that isn't what operational means to me. And you had your hand up?
Yes.
And then we'll come back to you.
Operational money is the most highly sought after money by arts organizations and the most difficult to get because the easier, the easier money is programming money that's specifically for an exhibit or specifically for play. But an organization can't exist without the operational money to keep the lights on and motor running, is it correct? So this is very.
But we are talking about two different things because what Margaret was saying was a production, that's a program. And Javier is talking about his programs as well, so I don't know if we're clear.
Likewise, you know, I mean, we have to pay for our lights, we still have, you know, we have our, thank goodness, you know, I have a garden angel that gave me a building for free, you know? But, but, you know, I know that there's a lot of other organizations who are having to pay the rent or having to pay, you know, keep the doors open.
But the money can be shifted, meaning if you get money, then you can shift to doing something else that becomes more tangible than you would have if you hadn't gotten it. So, you know, so it still can be the same thing even though she's saying one thing and Margaret is saying, she said something about getting a consultant as well for the production, I think you mentioned that.
You pay the playwright.
Right, so that.
The programs that were given last year were operational, right?
Yes, they were.
But it was open ended, it wasn't necessarily operational. Open ended too, which is, which is a lot better, so you're not confined to only spend it on one particular item. You can use it for rent, you can use it for your arts materials, you can use it for stipends, for your instructors, you know, I mean, that's what it afforded us, for us, that's what it afforded our organization to do with that money.
But the organizations do have a furniture report that says what the money was specifically spent for.
You know, I really think that supporting outdoor operations is, would be a good thing for us to do or a program, I wouldn't like to see us restrict it too much. I think for me, the decision to grant would be, I hope, based on what is it going to produce for our community? What are we going to benefit from, not, oh, we're not going to pay for your rent, you have to figure out how you're going to stay afloat and be a program, we won't let you use it for rent. I think that's hurting ourselves if we do that, so I'd like to see maximum flexibility, as long as there's something that we get from it. That's, yeah, I was just going to say something.
It's been my experience that unrestricted operational money is.
It's been my experience that unrestricted operational money is the money that is most needed, is most vital, really. And it's the one, you know, everyone needs. And in her case, it's to programs. And in his case, it's for artists, which speaks to your question. So, I think unrestricted is the word we're looking for, operational. And then when recognized, when recognizing the City of Oxnard for this grant, it would be across the board, and your operation is really your, your, your entire year of programming. So, I would say that you want to be recognized as, you know, a vital member in all of their programs across the board.
Yeah, and also the budget, you know, the budget is projection. This is where we plan to spend the money if we are lucky enough to be rewarded. And the report is a reconciliation of the budgets so that you have a map that can tell you how they plan to spend the money. If you feel it justifies, if they merit this kind of grant, then tracking their behavior and they have a reconciliation. And it can be a modification. You know, we thought we were going to spend ten thousand on, on salary. It turns out we spent five on salary and five on rent. Whatever, you know, but you have that paid tracking as part of the core of that unrestricted funding.
While we haven't decided on number one, how do people feel about that allocation for the first time around? Because it would be flexible.
Guys, I have a concern about the individuals. And I'm normally doing this because we have experience. Individual artists may be brilliant artistically, but they may be horribly taking care of their money, tracking it, reporting it, and being in any way semi-aware of timeframe. In the past, to, to address that, some artists, and hopefully in this case, they're affiliated with, with a nonprofit, with an agency that has some way of making absolutely sure that this money is being spent according to how the artist says he or she is being spent. Uh, and I think it creates two traits. It creates relationship artist with agency, agency with artist, and, and it creates a bonding of community. I don't want to say supervision. I think it's bonding. I know that we have lots and lots of, Jackie's one of the great artists here in the community. We've got a lot of artists. How much are we going to give them? Are we going to give them a thousand, five thousand, ten thousand? They can always all that money, but how is it going to be supervised?
I just want to comment that Margaret Travis is here, and she has had experience in administering funding to individual artists. And I think that she would be a great resource to you in dealing with questions that Armando is bringing up. And so, I don't know that, you know, I don't want to go into a dissertation right now, but I do want to let you know that there is someone who's been there, done that.
And there is a way of monitoring the individual artists, I'm sure.
We, we have a grant program called Artists and Community Partnership, and they are for individual artists. And the, the initial review process of their application, of course, is very important. And, and we do require a track record. And, um, and, and you don't give them all the money at one time. So, there's another ways of watching and monitoring it.
And I was just saying, they're friends and I've known them for years. As a nonprofit, they've been fiscal sponsors for different quality of flight programs. And then we've been responsible for reporting on their art, I mean, their art grants that they've had at different, few set times. And that usually is two times within a, a funding process.
So, and, and talking about flexibility, then we can do it in several ways for the individuals, so it doesn't all have to be on the question.
Depending on what the proposal is, we could perhaps suggest a few ways that it can be monitored or administered, and see what, see what we come up with, and size doesn't fit on.
So, are we, are we looking at the suggested amounts as something to try for the first time around?
No, I think, I would like to put a little more into emerging organizations. You know, I'm not, right now, I'm not even sure. I can think of too many, but I'd like to put a little bit more than we put into individual grants. I wouldn't want to take it out of legacy. I would say another, I would maybe change it to fifty-fifty. I don't know what others think of that.
I think it's a greater topic.
What do you think?
It's fine.
Fifty-fifty. But I think fifty thousand, fifty thousand, the two together are a hundred thousand.
Emerging.
Emerging and individual.
And if they don't have full subscription on the emerging, you can reallocate it back to the individual. I mean, that's the choice. The committee has a reallocation.
A thousand dollars to Jackie Biaggi would, would put up the Carnegie. I mean, a thousand dollars is an incredible amount of money for people that have not received anything. So, I believe that's, that's, what you guys are doing is tremendous. Actually funding artists for the first time. And, I mean, emerging, a lot of the agencies need money as well. I think, Carmen, it's a good idea.
Five thousand would be better for a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, they're great to use five thousand. So, for instance, we're thinking sculptures that have, you know, bigger material needs, they say.
Yeah, so great.
I think that I have to endorse the modest comment, which is truly fair by the city of arts organization that is providing support for individual artists nowadays. It is really true.
You know, let's be real too, because a lot of artists are struggling, and nobody, I don't know if anybody's paying less than a thousand a month for rent. Nobody, usually more than two or twenty-five hundred, for the most modest. You've got to pay the rent too, while you, while you do your art and feed yourself, so.
Yeah.
So, are we going fifty-fifty? That sounds good. Is that a consensus?
And, and like you said, back to saying, you know, adjustable if you have, go more on one side or less on the other side, you know? You know, right. One of the suggestions, like for the, for the, for the, uh, that second section, was I know that there can be some periods where individual artists that have submitted a short-term little project that they wanted to do, that they can reapply at a, at another given date, that, that could be something that we can consider. So, they have an opportunity to, once they complete that particular project, have another grant cycle, like for the individual artist, to reapply for whatever is there. You know, that, that's also something that we can give the, the individual artists or the emerging artists an opportunity to reapply again.
On the awards, we've given a range, and just, if there's any issues there. Okay. Matching funds either for an organization or an individual may be something worth considering. I'm a little concerned about doing it in this year's cycle, just because I think it can get kind of complicated, and I know there's an interesting part to me to.
Sorry.
To infuse these funds into the community pretty rapidly. And then the other is, you know, whether or not the grants would be limited to a percentage of yearly operating budgets. And this would be primarily identified with the legacy organizations, which I presume, as five-on-one, C3s have to adopt yearly budgets. So, that was just a question to the committee.
On the matching, I think it would lay the seeds of what we're considering down the road. Even the operating funds, you know, next year, if you don't get it, or, or your organization grows enough, it starts to be a little difficult. But perhaps, it also, in this climate, we know at museums how very difficult it is to raise funds. Perhaps you might think of requiring just perhaps a percent of the amount given in the grant as the match, and allow in-kind donations. This would also start to leverage, and I think that's something that Tracy could, it would multiply the impact, but still make it very doable, even if it were, I don't know, what amount would come up, ten percent, that type of thing. It also helps the organization, although I'll let, I'll let those who have to do it more routinely follow up on that. It gives you a way to leverage a few more donations out of your normal budget. But perhaps a very small amount would, would make it doable to get, get the concept going. Also making that a requirement in your reporting, that you're asking of your grantees, that how did this one can leverage other support? To be able to gauge where your money is going, you know? And give potential free following year. You know, perhaps next year, we're going to require a one-to-one match. But, you know, what else did you do with it? Especially if this wasn't, didn't fund an entire project or an entire year. You want to know what percent.
Every national report in the last ten years confirms conservatively that every dollar invested in the arts in local communities is returned three times over. This is a precise paper trail to prove that point by identifying leveraging funds.
I like, I like the idea of calling it leveraging than requiring a matching. That just makes people lose heart, and they've got to find some money. I think it's very difficult these days. Leveraging sounds really good, because it could be in-kind. It doesn't have to be actual cash. See, Tracy's trying to say something.
I wonder if, in your awareness of international activities, if there are other practices or models that, that grants to organizations or foundations are encouraging recipients to put into place? Like maybe it's not matching funds, maybe it's some measurable improvement to development strategies or your fundraising infrastructure or?
Yeah, there's a whole movement for that, particularly at the national foundations level. I'm talking about the big ones, you know, the, the Lita Wallises and the, you know, that, that level. Certainly in Southern California and in Northern California, some of the foundations would have reflect that, that they have a whole program, which is about economic development, economic builders, so that they're looking upon grants. Certainly as a meritocracy, these are groups who've been doing good things, and they, they deserve to be identified and rewarded. But also, how are these grants going to help you build out this way and show us your planning? I, I recently, you know, was successful in helping Plaza de la Rosita get a ten thousand dollar grant for the Urban Foundation to develop their, their box office. And the key is, you're going to take this money, that you're going to make more money with it, you're going to show it to us. If you prove that in your planning, and then you do it in your demonstration after one year, we'll fund you for the second year. Very, very dynamic in this proposal that way to help, you know, so that they want to give the money to groups that are doing good work, but they also want to support the work of those groups to build additional resources. And that's the national trend that's going on right now, with the exception of individuals. Because I think that if you're asking an individual for an award between one and five thousand dollars to leverage, it's a task. I would rather that they report and demonstrate how they have essentially provided that service through funding than try and match or leverage. But with organizations anywhere from a hundred thousand and up, show us how you can make money off of this money we're giving you.
Might be a neat way to meet the legacy organizations where they're at, as opposed to them requiring to do some cookie cutter matching. But what, what infrastructure can we help fund and support or create?
We'll see that even coming out of categories, or coming out of public reports, like NECA. Like NECA. They, they even got categories that are now becoming incentive org.
I think it's a good idea to sort of plant the seed, and maybe it, it morphs over time, but, but I agree that it will have to run with the environment. Yes, that help is very helpful, I think.
I just want to make a comment on your opinion. Just talk with her. The idea of the percentage of the yearly operating budget, I think that for the legacy organization, or at least for me, I would prefer that rather than the requirement for matching funds, is that, you know, what's being asked here is, you know, that your, your, let's say that your budget is a hundred thousand, and your, your percentage, that the grant proposal would be no more than twenty percent of the budget or twenty-five percent of the budget, however you want to set that out. But, uh, in terms of the organizations, I think it's preferable to ask to say the grant will be limited to X percentage of your operating budget. All right, just, just a comment.
Any thoughts when we are over?
Since we're talking about the other reasons, well, I made, you know, a great point about traditional art organizations, so, so that notion fits great with Carnegie. You know, how many tickets do you sell? We are in the business of keeping kids out of jail and sending them to college. How do you translate that? Javier is in the business of doing the same thing, transforming and empowering young people, not creating incredible musicians, but creating incredible young people. How do you translate that into box office sales? Well, you don't. But, but it does translate and empower the community. That's a leveraging as well. So, I, I think what we want to do is be really super progressive and really cutting-edge in this community with respect to what we do with art, because it is transformational, it is empowering, and it shows every, every sign, not only of making money, but keeping young people in the right path.
You can back that. You can add that as a service. Right now in City of California, it costs us forty-eight thousand dollars per minor, per year, to be incarcerated. It costs us twenty thousand dollars per minor, per year, to be in school. So, we're able to prove that we're keeping kids out of jail. Gentlemen, we're making twenty-four thousand K on each head, and we can read one, and we can prove that we're service-oriented.
But I think in, in terms of your guidelines and how you're writing this out, how you're structuring it, you can leave it up to the organization to give you how they're going to go, they're going to lay it out, and how they're going to gauge success.
Can you quick somebody, the people or the organization that will decide or review the grants will be the city council, etc., and vote?
I don't think it will be. I know we're going to have a separate committee. I'm not sure how it'll be composed, but it won't be, it won't be anybody who has a conflict of interest, and it won't be, I don't think it'll be you and I.
No. I don't think so either.
In a sense, what we're doing here is trying to outline the criteria of how grants will be given out. It's good that these letter proposals specifically say, "This is art and the benefits are," because we're seeing, we're discussing it as art. Because if I can say, "I'm the auto museum, but technically we repair cars," where's the art in that? By my, we have art in our own way, but through that, they learn a technical skill in repairing cars.
Well, I think that art is about democracy. It's about its freedom of expression. I, I don't think we want to limit it to just, you know, how many kids we keep out of jail, because that's one really great thing. But it's also how many young people learn to play an instrument or appreciated it, how many members came to see a production at theatro. So, I don't think we have to say, "Oh, it's going to have this particular dollar value or these ticket sales." It has to be, I think we want some flexibility here, because art itself is, is what it is.
What can be neat in the reporting requirements is whatever artists and organizations, the, the writing that they submit to apply for the grant and the writing that they submit to report on how they use the money, that will be really invaluable to the city in terms of having a body of language and a vocabulary for illustrating to non-artists parts of the city what the arts are up to. But one of the things to talk about in terms of the reporting, there's the quantitative, how many people, how much money, then of the counting, which is really important because it matters to some. But also, if there are some quantitative models that we ask our organizations and artists to use to get testimonials, um, to get language, to qualify before and after, for, you know, things like that. My, building that vocabulary that we share in terms of what this money does in the community will really powerful. And that's a leveraging point for us to raise more money to fund it.
And that's okay. We have a.
The big point of all of this is no matter how wonderfully you write the reports and how. how cleverly we design the models, if we don't orient the team who will be our reviewers into how to look at those models effectively, if we don't have an evaluation process that is so consistent, because we know how to build that, then everything is moot. I mean, it reduces it. And that happens so frequently that we have all these incredible people here with a will to make productive change in our community. And then our weak link is that evaluation component, because we don't know how to have consistent, superior brain power over all, looking at that process. So we need to have that in mind when we're starting, is that, although we're not at that stage right now.
I think we have one of the experts here who does a lot of reviewing annually, Margaret, who can probably maybe just give us a little insight as to the process that you use that can answer the questions that he's raising. And the body is likewise what Dr. Teresa just mentioned as well.
Well, most of the panels that review grants for cities and the state of California, for instance, our California Arts Council grants, are people, arts professionals who understand about the arts. And you want people who are not intimately involved with the community, the people who are actually applying, because then they have to recuse themselves and so on. So you get, you get people who really know and, you know, it surrounds us in the county. There are people in all of our communities that could serve on a review panel for the city of Oxnard.
I'll just raise declarations after 2:30 is started late, which I'm wondering if we can, can we extend some of it? I do have to be at the 3:00 though.
I do, we have a meeting.
I think there's a...
We have a meeting.
We'll go to 3:00.
You go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for that discussion. For the, for the next meeting, we'll have a more in-depth discussion about the review panel. And if there are candidates that anyone would like to suggest, I'd be happy to take those either before or at that time, so thank you. I think that concludes my list of issues relative to the RFP. So that would be, I give a five and that is a great opportunity to Tracy to give her advice.
As I emailed last day, there weren't any proposals that were formulated in a time, in a time we, or in times for us to consider this, but maybe we'll report on it.
Can we have some more of this? Do we have, do we have people have a list of these grants available to institutions like the city or beyond the city? We have a list of what might be available, when it's available, to be more on top of it.
Is there a clearinghouse? Is there like a...
No, you just kind of get them if you're on the list and that kind of stuff, but it's easy enough to try to compile some stuff, but, and some of the grants are inventing themselves as they go, so.
I saw a head shaking, this way and that way.
Oh, the Ventura County Community Foundation is a resource for grants and it's available to their library and they are on the foundation centers. They're part of the Foundation Center Worldwide Grant Network. So you can, you just put in the things that matter to you, your geography, your subject matter and so on. Weekdays from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, you can go in and use their computer and there's somebody there who can help you with it and you can search for grants.
We make our own clearinghouse from there.
Okay, there's new business, a moment.
Well, it was, no, I think I want to, it's fortuitous that they canceled the last time and we were able to talk and be here and I think that they see the exciting work that we're doing around. I think it's a possibility now for Oxnard to join this network somewhere along the way so that we can address where the funding is, where the cutting-edge ideas are, all of those things, so that we're not perpetually in this community reinventing the wheel. And I think if these people bring that type of expertise, the burden...
So my name is Rebecca Nogueres and I've had the honor and the privilege to serve as the executive director of the Latino Arts Network of California for the last six years. But as last mentioned earlier, it were 15 years long. We've been doing business for statewide partners with the California Arts Council in supporting, promoting and strengthening the Latino arts community in California. California is a huge state. It's several states within a state. So it's been wonderful to be able to partner with the people on the ground in fields like Oxnard and the Cafe Ane. We, again, support, strengthen the community through the arts. And we started as a consortium of community-based centers from up and down the state. Ten simple ones from San Diego, one in Los Angeles, one in Fresno, a couple up north. We've now grown to 100, over 100 organizations. We're here to provide service to the artists in this community. And again, I'm in the privilege to be here while you're developing this grant program. This is cutting edge. The art that's happening here, you know, we've been to the metropolitan cities, the art that is happening here in spite of the lack of funding is inspirational.
It's reflective of the democracy that's going on in the state of California and the shift in climate and the participation and inclusion of many more diverse cultures and communities in California. We call ourselves Latino Art Medallion, but we're not restricted to discerning Latino communities and artists, because we recognize that the presentation of that culture is the contribution of that culture to the California culture, to our mutual culture. And in that way, it's imperative that we incorporate many audiences and many people that are going to benefit from that signature. We find that we are the only statewide network of art vision in California. It's also the challenge and the logic. But we're here at the behest of our partner and our friend at Cafe Ane, because we think Cafe Ane is a nexus. I used to work with a wonderful, wonderful visionary named Sister Karen Bocallaro, who was the founding director of South African Graphics, and I was the executive director at the onset of her job. She told me before she died, kiddo, the most important thing I do every day is open the damn door. And she used to cuss like that, yes. And what she was saying was, you know, open the doors and the artists will create the activity. And when you open the doors to Cafe Ane, I hear two or three people here, I hear individual artists, I hear little groups, I hear old friends talking about how we crisscross. And I think that's why we're here. And I honestly see how Oxnard is that representing this area, is that place as well. And so it's our privilege and pleasure to be here. And I got to tell you what Rebecca's telling you, as I'm listening to you guys talk about your program, it's like, you know, you're blessed with, with starting out at this level and saying, well, this is what we want to do, rather than being told what you've been wanting to do. And what you want to do is so much more democratic and progressive than anything I've heard in years. Congratulations.
I have a question for you. Nice meeting you.
Did you answer it?
The Latino Arts Network, do other cities participate or join officially?
Yeah, we have a partnership. We have about 125 members and we have, and then another additional, you know, a couple hundred that are individuals and we are connecting with blogs. You know, it, California, you know, the greatest challenge in California is it's so darn big. There's five states inside the state. So we're using new technology, we're using different communities, we're using different communication devices, we're driving to places, we're also blogging to places. We're just trying to create that network.
Well, my question, are cities like members?
Yes.
And then my other question is, because of course we're predominantly Latino in this community, but we're not exclusively Latino, we have African-American folks, Asian-Americans, Filipinos. Do you know of other networks for those particular communities?
Yes.
And also the Hondurian community that we could, we should know about?
Yes, the California Arts Council has South African state.
So it's a California Arts Council, so that's a broad...
Although I should point out that when you talk to kiddo, you're talking all colors, all races, all religions.
Well, I know that, but not everybody...
And part of our mission is to help identify that, and also to recognize that, you know, we're trying to embrace all audiences with Latino art and culture, make it drawn.
Are you familiar with the African diaspora?
Oh, absolutely.
Then remember, we are all part of the African diaspora.
Tell us about South Africa, what you did.
Oh, when I was in South Africa, oh, well, I had, I worked in many years with the Congress of South African Writers and I'll maybe be very quick for you, I'm sorry. And when they finally won liberation and I got to go to the new government of Mandela, I met up with my friends who were writing the legislation for the new government on funding and authorizing the arts under the new banner of South Africa. And, and we, it was great to finally meet them and they appropriately got me drunk on homemade apple beer. And about 2:00 in the morning, we were having a review of some of the writing that they were doing, and they said, we're having trouble with this part. And I went, yeah, well, try this. 2:00 in the morning with apple beer, I'm like, how about this? And they went, yeah, we love that. And a week later, they submitted it and it was ratified, so I can say that I, I worked on one line of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa for arts legislation authorization. Please, thank you, thank you. So I like the stuff you're writing too.
I just, I wanted to see a two that could act celebratory, but also a dialogue feature of it. And I'm not sure when to do it. So anyway, just want to keep it on the agenda, keep it on that line, so that's really all I have to say about that. But I think Frank has a question.
We still have the art club and the arts meeting, it's ongoing at Oxnard. We could use that every second Tuesday or Thursday.
We could change it to not a Tuesday, so it's not conflicting.
But what I'm wondering is, we have it, we have a lot of people.
The kitchen is good and we were, we started to rotate so we could spread the love and, but it depends on how, but the kitchen is always has that extra room and, and of course...
One of the things that Debbie and I have found, this is not the good issue, is that when we have alcohol, we send a mixed message to kids. We want kids involved, but then we serve alcohol. So at the Cafe Ane, we've instituted an absolute no-drinking policy. And that then, that's in young kids, every kind of kid and the left kids that we go through. And so I just, hopefully we're not changes of the alcohol policy when we're trying to improve the entire community.
Or just suggest the path, you know, it's centrally located, we know where it's at. And that's where we did the branding project, I remember we had quite the turnout when we were in the process of doing branding for the city.
We don't get to use it for freedom, in other way, so we're gonna play it that more again.
We will include it.
All right, so the next, maybe two to three months.
Okay.
Okay?
Future items, I will, next time add to the student list that we had some time back, maybe to see where we are with that, so, and then we can use that to add future items as well.
I remember we discussed having Mr. Strickland.
I want to add, because the summer months are coming, and I know we're running negotiations right now with Ventura County to get summer jobs for youth. I'd like to see those summer youth jobs attached to arts and culture. And not to picking up trash or, cool, but I want them to be involved in the arts and culture. So I would like to bring that up at the next meeting, so that when I talk to the county people, I can bring back a report about what we're formulating as ideas.
Any else, Woods? And whenever you want to bring Strickland, you know, if you get two on your notice, we'll get him on. Would you want to just sort of schedule that or?
I think if we could coordinate it with them at a general meeting, that might be good.
Well, was it gonna be for a general meeting or a presentation or?
You guys decide, but we're gonna also have him at the cafe. You guys decide what you guys want to do here, but we're gonna do a big thing with him.
I think having him here in the context of this kind of one-hour meeting is not helpful.
He's an incredibly dynamic man.
Sam?
Well, I just, I would just like to invite everybody tonight, Downtown Center for the Arts, it's Monday Night Foreign Film Series. We have a great film tonight at 3:30, 6:30, Academy Award winner, The Separation, great film from Iran. Every American should see it. And also tonight, we have, in partnership with the Carnegie Art Center, the Carnegie is open from 4:30 to 6:30 for film patrons. So everybody's a film patron, so come on over. Anyway, congratulations.
I have a question on the budget.
Yes.
We haven't really got a...
Yes, we did.
I, I'm just kind of wondering, you have a debit which is cleared and you have a credit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for you.
Well, not now?
The credit, yes, I don't know, honestly, I don't know if the debit is set.
That's not my question. If you subtract the debit and add the credit, it doesn't come to 3:39.
No, it does not. And I confuse myself as what difference between 3:39 and 3:43 is. I think the true, I think, I think the true balance is 3:43.
Okay, great. You like that? Will you spin that out for me?
Yeah, these things are a mystery.
On the committee business chart, did we skip that one too or did we just jump over?
No, we're, we're committee business, so it's very...
Well, you know, I wanted, maybe the committee could help me out. The students that sort of led the charge to stay with the program, I think they're at a point now where they need some good advice, you know? So I don't know how the community would feel if they came and they just presented what they're doing and then maybe just all of us could give them some advice on what they could do to continue fighting for their program. They're just at a point now where, so they had a victory, but I know that they still want to do more, but they don't really know how. And, you know, I'm a professor, so I'm kind of limited on my civic engagement kind of, you know, leadership. I don't really know what to say to them anymore, but I thought maybe this committee could give some good advice.
I think, I'm not sure how good the advice would be, it might be good, but I do think it'd be good for them to come and make a presentation at some point about what they're doing and go from there. It might, it might take a lot more time than we could do in a setting.
I think this would, I think something like that wouldn't be, this wouldn't be the venue, but maybe having the committee and go to Cafe Ane and we're all there while they...
Something like that.
Yes, but I don't think this is the venue for that.
And I think maybe you could ask individual people if they will be willing to be matches for some of the people.
Yeah, I think they need some, they need some inventory right now.
And then we could schedule something, if it's okay with you guys, at Cafe Ane, you sit there and all of us will be there and we could do that. But if we do it here, it's like the city is, is giving them advice on what to do at another venue, the government jurisdiction that we have no control over.
Any other group announcements or business?
At the Maritime Museum, we will open the Oxnard High School Art Show, Oxnard Union High School District Art Show. We'll have more than 50 artists represented. The second Thursday in the month, I think it's the 12th, we have the reception and the awards night, and we pick the favorite of the audience and everyone is welcome. To the Art Museum, this is... For our museum, this is the busiest day of the year. We've done this for 21 years now, so we're really proud of this event.
April 12th, you say?
April 12th, probably about 6:30.
They're fantastic.
New building or old building?
In the old building. Next year, the new building.
Congratulations on a very nice art museum.
My name is Tony D. I am the publisher and producer of the Press Carrier. So I would like to cover everybody's. Yeah, the Press Carrier. So I'll give you my card, and you guys can see this meeting there tonight at presscarrier.org. Press Carrier with the OR instead of ER.
Oh, okay.
.org.
Any else?